The December 21st, 2020 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting. Welcome everyone. It's good to have all of you with us virtually tonight. Before we begin the meeting, I will make a few announcements regarding our method of making public comments. There are several different ways that you can do that, either for our public comment session, or we also have a public hearing on our new business tonight, and there are methods that you can make comment on that as well. You can email your comments with your name, address, and telephone number to publiccomment@cabarruscounty.us. There's also the ability to go to the council commissioners' chambers in the governmental center, where there is a camera set up there, and people have the ability to participate in public comments from there as well. You can also email publiccomment@cabarruscounty.us, and I think that they can supply you with information to call in as well. So we have several different methods of doing that regarding the public comments for our public hearing that will be later in the meeting. You also have an additional 24 hours after the conclusion of the meeting to make additional public comments if you so desire. That is a new law that's been enacted in North Carolina because of the number of virtual meetings, so that gives you that additional 24 hours to comment. So first on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of our last meeting, and you all have copies of those before you. So at this time, do I hear any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Keiger, a second by Commissioner Honeycutt, to approve the minutes as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That motion passes. And we move now to the approval of the agenda. We do have one item on our consent agenda, which is item F5, that we need to pull off and move to new business. We've had a change there that we can discuss in new business, and I'm making a note of that, so we'll be sure to discuss that. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the changes on page 29, and also making the change to move item F5 from the consent agenda to new business.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Schu, a second by Commissioner Strang. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to recognitions and presentations. And I did want to add one item to the beginning of our recognitions. Certainly, our entire community is in mourning with the tragic death of Concord Police Officer Jason Shuping. Was killed in the line of duty for doing his job, taking care of the citizens of Concord and Cabarrus County. Certainly, I think it's no exaggeration that our entire community is devastated by the loss of this brave police officer. Jason was only 25 years old in the beginning of his career, and certainly, our thoughts and prayers go out to his family, his wife Haley, his parents, Richard and Lynn, his brother and sisters, and certainly to his fellow officers with the City of Concord Police Department, as well as all law enforcement officers who are definitely shaken by this very tragic loss. So at this time, I would like to observe a moment of silence in honor and memory of Jason Shuping. There have been many people in the community that have reached out in a number of different ways to ask how they might participate in honoring Jason. The Chamber of Commerce is working with the City of Concord, Lowe's Home Improvement, and GE to provide blue light bulbs that people can burn in their outside fixtures of their homes through January the 23rd. They're also asking that at the end of that time, that people can save them to use again when we honor all of our police officers, May 9th through 15th, for National Police Week. They have 600 of these blue light bulbs that they will be distributing. They will be distributed on Monday, December 28th, from 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at both Concord Fire Station Number 3, which is at 100 Warren Coleman Boulevard North, and they will also be available at Concord Fire Station Number 9 at 1020 Ivy Klein Road. So those are our two locations where these bulbs can be picked up, and of course, we encourage many more than the 600 people that would get those bulbs to participate as well. And I think that that will be a wonderful way for our community to remember Jason and to honor him, as well as all of our other police officers during Police Week. So we encourage folks to participate. Jason's services will be tomorrow at 1:00 p.m. at the Cabarrus Arena and Events Center. So once again, our thoughts and prayers go out to all of his family members, as well as all of our police officers and everyone in the community that's affected by this very tragic loss. It makes us all appreciative of the work that they do on our behalf every single day of the year, and the fact that they go out and meet danger bravely on our behalf all the time. So that is certainly a tribute that we want to make to all of our police officers. Next on our agenda, from Human Resources, is a recognition of a retirement from our ranks, from somebody that we have all had a very close working relationship with, and I will turn the floor over to County Manager Mike Downs for that recognition at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are here to acknowledge a wonderful career here in Cabarrus County of Ms. Susan Farrington. She is currently our Finance Director. She's been here just under 25 years, and prior to that, she had some other experience as well in local government. She was hired here in March of 96. She started out with the county as a financial reporter or an accounting analyst, and it didn't take her long. Six months later, she was already promoted to her first supervisory job as an Accounting Operations Supervisor. And she did an excellent job there. So several years later, in 2003, Susan was promoted to Assistant Finance Director. And again, as she continued to do an excellent job, she was moved to the top of all of the operational issues in the county, both from the departments, but then even more so with school funding and capital project funding. So Susan has done an excellent job there. Kyle Billiford and I were reminiscing a little bit here today in how she kept the two of us. In the past, she kept me straight when we were doing projects as far back as the General Services Administration Building, and the animal shelter, and the arena, and she was keeping the books on that. And anytime you even looked like you were going to sway out of the way that you weren't supposed to, she was there slapping your wrist and telling you to get back in line. And she wanted to make sure she knew where every penny was. And then, again, and then everything else since the arena that Kyle has been in charge of building, she has been right there beside Kyle all the way up to now with the new courthouse. So she is, again, as I mentioned before, project management. She is fantastic. She has taken it upon herself over the years to not only know local government, county financing, she has done an excellent job of learning in the school financing process, and how to fund schools, and how to schedule that funding, and how do we go about that process of working with the school system so that we can meet their schedule, and they can meet our financial schedule, as to when we can have cash available to help them with their projects. In addition to that, Susan's always willing to help with any project that's out there. If it has anything to do with numbers or finance, that's who you call, is Susan. And then also, if you want an excellent dessert, you also call Susan, because she is a wonderful cake and pie maker. So we're going to miss her for that, as well as her financial skills. We're going to miss her cooking skills as well. So we're excited that she is moving on to retirement, but we are also sad as well that she is leaving, because she is a good friend, she's an excellent employee and coworker. And so with that, I will turn it over to, Susan is here listening, and give her an opportunity, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, to say a few words.
Absolutely.
I'm having Scott join me here tonight, say with me.
Oh, good. Thanks, Scott.
It's a little hard when you're not in the chambers, but anyway, I wanted to take this time to thank you for your support through the years. The board, and the county management, and the department heads have just been top-notch. And my family for their support through the years, my husband Scott, our two children, who are now married and gone, but through the years, you know, all the late nights and long days, but they understood and gave me tremendous support. But I will say for the counties, kudos for the counties. I never missed a school party, or anything for my children, any band competition, or cheerleading, or anything like that. They were always willing to let me work extra to be oft attend to my children, and they never missed a beat. However, you cannot be a good finance director without an excellent finance staff. So I wanted to personally thank Suzanne Burgess and all the other finance staff for their continued dedication through the years. Together, the finance staff has pulled together and always made sure that the county employees got paid, that the vendors got paid, and the funds got deposited every day, and we never missed a debt payment. We always went out for and achieved the financial reporting excellence for the Government Finance Officers Association, and just many other projects through the years. As Mike mentioned, I have enjoyed working with the capital projects with Kyle, and through the many years for the county capital projects, and all the different school projects, and doing my part to finance them. I will miss everyone, and would wish you much continued success. And Ms. Strang, you've got some awesome people to work with during the next couple of years, and congratulations on your appointment. Thank you.
Susan, real quick, before the others speak, how many years in a row have we won the financial award?
It's 35 years, so it was before I got here, but we did continue that on, and then we added the budget award through the years, and it's probably up to about 15 years straight through the budget award. And just this past year, we got the first time we get in the popular finance award through GFOA, so we're going to be going out for the second year this year for that one. So just try and stay on top of everything and keep everything straight through the years.
Great. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Susan. It's, as Mike has already said, you know, we certainly wish you well and hope you enjoy your retirement, but in a very selfish way, we do not want to see you go. It has been such a pleasure to work with you over the years. It's been, you know, some of these discussions that we have, of course, the main thing that Susan probably hears from me is, Susan, I don't understand. And Susan does a wonderful job of explaining all of those things and helping me through those things. One of the things that's unique about being Chairman of the Board is when, you know, we have a lot of discussions and deliberations about when we have to incur debt for our capital projects over the years, but it was the first time that I walked into one of those document signing sessions where Susan is there with our bond counsel, and she's got about, well, I might be exaggerating a little bit, but I don't think it's a whole lot, but 100 documents lined up all around the table. And, you know, Susan, you're going to have to tell me what I'm signing, but of course, I always felt comfortable that we were doing the right thing, and so it's not, I've also had an opportunity to serve with Susan on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. She works in that same role there, keeping up with all of those payments, and all those programs, and all those vendors, and all of the rules and regulations about the reports that are supposed to be filed, and on and on. And always, Susan participates in our Chair-Vice Chair meetings with our school board, where we talk about all of those finance projects, and she is just a delight to be around. In addition to being so proficient professionally in what she does, she is just a wonderful person and a wonderful friend, and certainly will be missed. I don't think that there's any sort of rules or regulations that prevent you from bringing cakes and pies, as Mike mentioned. So you will always have a ready audience. So thank you so much for everything that you've done for the county, for me personally, and for the board, and we certainly wish you well. And I will turn the floor over to my fellow commissioners. I'm sure that they have some comments to make as well.
I'm going to jump in before everybody says the same thing, because you took a lot of what I was going to say, but I just, I've had the opportunity to serve with Susan on the Chair-Vice Chair meetings, as well as the school budget meetings. And, you know, obviously, you're good at what you do. I mean, you're great at what you do, but more importantly, it's the way in which you do it, the professionalism, the caring way you do it, and the way you communicate with others. If I remember correctly, the year before I came on the board, I think that we were in mediation with the school board. I don't see that would ever happen with the group of people here now, and with the way in which you conduct yourself and staying in touch with the school board. And even though we can't maybe do everything they want, you know, coming to terms with each other and understanding each other's side, and not just everybody can do that. And so thank you for the way in which you've done your job. We appreciate that you're great at it, and that goes without saying, but like I said, the way in which you do it.
Thank you.
Says a lot about who you are.
Well, I don't know that I can say anything more than what Steve and Diane said, Susan, but it has been a pleasure. You know, I didn't realize that you took that role in 2014, and that's when I was first put in this role, and it has been just wonderful, you know, and, but I just don't know, you know, how you stayed so young, you know, to, you know, retire at such a young age, you know.
Thank you.
Do you know what her secret is, Scott? Maybe it's working all the time.
Don't slow down.
Well, don't stop, that's for sure. You enjoy your retirement, and we'll be around. Yeah, thank you, Susan.
Susan, you have done an incredible job for us, and I remember in 14 when you got appointed, and I was on the other side of the table, and I spent a lot of time at that time trying to get to know different people on both sides of the table, and I was always struck at the professionalism that you showed, and that the county staff showed, as well as the school board staff at that time. And, you know, I haven't had the chance on this side to work with you as long as some of the others, but been incredibly impressed with your professionalism, and the way you go about communicating to us and answering questions when we need something. So sometime later on in the future, when I think back, and I hope it's a long time from now, but when I'm looking back on my career, and I think about the people that I've had the pleasure to deal with, that were very professional in what they did, it's going to be a pretty short list, but you are going to be on that list, and you just did an amazing job for us, and we're incredibly grateful for all that you've done. And wish you all the best for what you're going to do in the future.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
This is Barbara. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to work with you, but I've heard such wonderful things about you, and I'm sure your shoes will be tough to fill going forward, but look forward to working, you know, in your, you know, working with that new person, because I'm sure you have got them up to speed, and more so ways than we probably will imagine. So I just wanted to say thank you for all you've done, and really enjoy your retirement, and have a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Everybody, please join me in a round of applause for Susan.
Thanks so much.
And we're sorry that we can't do it in person. We're getting kind of adjusted to this, but thank you so much.
Scott, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for joining.
Okay, we move now to item C2, and this is our proclamation and recognition of Martin Luther King Day, and so I would like to read that to you at this time. Whereas Reverend Martin Luther King, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born on January 15th, 1929, in Atlanta, Georgia, and devoted his life to fighting poverty, injustice, and racism in America. And whereas Reverend Dr. King, through his practice of nonviolent protest, promoted the importance of love, peace, and freedom for humankind, and challenged America to honor its promise of liberty and justice for all citizens. And whereas during his lifetime, Reverend Dr. King sought to forge the common ground on which individuals of all ages, races, and backgrounds could join together to address important community issues and provide service to their community. And whereas the third Monday in January has been established as a national holiday to observe the anniversary of Reverend Dr. King's birth, and commemorated as a national day of service. And now therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims Monday, January 18, 2021, as Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in Cabarrus County, and encourages all citizens to join in the special programs and ceremonies to be held throughout the county honoring the life and work of Reverend Dr. King and his legacy of peace and equality for all citizens. So do I hear a motion that we adopt this proclamation as read?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Keiger, and a second by Commissioner Schu to adopt the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. Day proclamation. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That motion passes unanimously. And we move now into informal public comments. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we have several different ways for folks to make public comment during these virtual meetings. And so at this time, I will call on our clerk, Lauren Linker, to report if we have anybody present in chambers, or if we have any phone calls or emails for folks wanting to make public comments.
Currently, there's no one on the phone. I have not received any emails, and it does not look like there's anyone in the chamber. We are double checking on that one.
Okay. If you find that to be different, you just interrupt me, and we'll go back to it. So we will move now to our consent agenda. As I've stated at each meeting, items on our consent agenda are items that have been discussed at length at our work session two weeks ago. And so we talk about all of these items at our work session, and then that gives the public two weeks to inquire about any of those items, or to come to our meeting to make comments during the public comment section. So at this time, and of course, as I mentioned when we approved the agenda, we removed item F5 from our consent agenda, which is the designation of the voting delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference. So with that change, do I hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda with that one change?
Move for approval, Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Honeycutt, a second by Commissioner Schu to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, and that motion passes. And we move now to new business. The first item on our new business from emergency management is adoption of ordinance amending Chapter 34, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Cabarrus County Code of Ordinances. This is an item that we did discuss at our work session, and did call for a public hearing. And I'm double checking to make sure if there's any other information that we wanted to share. I think Steve Langer is with us. Steve, did you have any additional comments you wanted to make before we open the public hearing?
No, sir, Chairman Morris, just nothing in addition to the work session where we discussed.
Okay, thank you, sir. So at this time, I will open the public hearing to receive comments from the public. I will call on our clerk to report if there are any emails, phone calls, or if anyone is present in the chamber to speak on this matter.
There is no one in the chamber. I have not received any emails, and there is no one currently on the phone.
Thank you. Okay, hearing no public comments, at this time, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the ordinance amending Chapter 34 of the Fire Prevention and Protection of the Cabarrus County Code of Ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Honeycutt, a second by Commissioner Kiger. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. That motion passes. Next, we move to item G2, which is, of course, we did a number of appointments to various committees in our consent agenda, and this is an additional one that has been necessitated by the retirement of Susan Fairington that we just talked about. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council member Susan Fairington will be retiring from her position as Finance Director for the county, January 1. Ms. Fairington has served on this committee since 2012, and it is requested to remove her name from the roster. Rodney Harris, Deputy County Manager, has submitted an application to fill Ms. Fairington's vacancy and is eligible to fill that position. Mr. Harris also serves on the Early Childhood Task Force Advisory Board, so an exception to the service on multiple boards, provision of the appointment policy will be needed for him. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to remove Susan Fairington from the Juvenile Crime Prevention roster and to thank her for her many years of service.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Schu, a second by Commissioner Strang. Is there any discussion? I made my comments earlier, we're talking about the wonderful job that Susan has done on this, on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and the way that she's handled the finances there, so thank you again, Susan. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. And that motion passes. And so at this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint Rodney Harris to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council as the county manager designee representative to complete an unexpired term ending September 30, 2021, including an exception to the service on multiple boards, provision of the appointment policy.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Strang, a second by Commissioner Kiger. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no, and that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chairman. And we move now to item G3 from Human Resources, and we have an update on the Families First Corona Virus Response Act, and I think Lundie Covington will talk with us about that.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am trying to do a screen share quickly so you can see a PowerPoint. If I can't successfully navigate to that, I've got Lauren Linker as my backup, so let's see if we can... Okay, it's giving me a can't display content. So Lauren, can you take over the slideshow portion for me, and I'll talk through it? So what we are hoping to do tonight is to share with you kind of an update on an act that we brought before you back in April when it was first approved, run through just a few slides that kind of refreshes your memory about what the act was about, and then talk about the what's next. This act is set to expire 12/31, so we are running on limited time. We have been, all of the Human Resources Committee has basically been listening, looking for any answers that might tell us this act will be extended, and as late as today, we are still continuing to hear there's nothing in the works that would move that forward. So again, I'll just go through the first slides very quickly, but do stop me if there's anything that's confusing or if I need to refresh. So Lauren, if you'll move to the next slide. This particular act was put into place to do two things. There was an emergency FMLA portion, so basically expanding FMLA beyond what it's traditionally been set to cover, and there was also an emergency paid sick leave act that was utilized for several circumstances. The effective dates of the act, April 1 through December 31, as I mentioned. So there were two basic categories that were covered under FECCRA, as we affectionately call it. The first is medical. There were three basic categories that situations could fall under for medical, and then Lauren, if you'll move to the second slide in that series, we also have caregiving, and that was where an employee wasn't personally quarantined but was providing care for a child either who was under that particular circumstance or with a school closure. So that was at two-thirds pay versus the full pay. This was limited to 80 hours per employee. So Lauren, if you'll move me forward, there were a few exclusions that were specifically set out under the act, and that included basically our public safety job classifications as well as our social workers in child welfare. We did ask the board on the next slide if we could have permission to expand coverage to these groups. That was a pretty common decision amongst other jurisdictions as well. The feeling was it would be beneficial to us as an employer to cover them for their own sick leave, and that would be those first three reasons, the medical reasons, but exclude them from caring for others, and that is basically what we asked you for that you approved back in April. We also asked to be allowed to use our own time to supplement that two-thirds pay. You also agreed to that, and that has helped employees. Very few circumstances, really, that we use the family care, but where that was needed, it allowed employees to use their own time to be brought back up to 100% pay. Then the final item we asked for are those situations where we didn't feel 80 hours would be time to cover, based on the line of work some of our employees are in, and that was where a first responder, for example, would maybe have a second or even third exposure based on their job. We ask if we could continue to cover that through discretionary pay, and you all graciously agree to that as well. So that basically walks us through what we've been doing for the past nine to 10 months. Again, it is set to expire on December 31, so we, as many employers under this act, have been looking for options, trying to navigate the best path. So what we wanted to present tonight is some wins we had with FECCRA and some things that maybe could have been better, and then a proposal for going forward. So I'll invite the county management team to jump in and add any content as they would like to. So Lauren, if you'll start us with the next slide. In going through what has been beneficial, basically, the win for us has been allowing employees to stay out and recover, which is good for them, but it also has kept employees from coming into work and sharing anything with their coworkers. So that's been a benefit to the remainder of our staff and also to the public. The pay was already budgeted, so there hasn't been an additional expense to the county with this program. We like to say this is one of those mandated but unfunded programs. And then, again, it's been a benefit to our employees because they've had time to care for those family members and then focus back on their work, but in a large number of situations, we've had employees very successfully shift to remote work, so it has not even been necessary. We've been able to make up work at off times and maybe on the weekends, or again, working while they're providing care. So if we could flip to the next slide, you'll kind of see the downside as we've kind of laid those out. The paperwork process required for this act has been very challenging. There's a lot of documentation. It's been kind of a cumbersome process. There also, because we want to certify that employees do have a medical condition that qualifies, we are putting a lot of employees through our clinic, which has really increased the volume for them, and it's, of course, getting more challenging with the numbers going up to be seen at the clinic or at the health department, so that continues to be a burden. And then there's the slight chance, and we do hope this is slight, that there could be some abuse from employees who are claiming exposures, and it is very difficult to provide documentation for non-employees or those family members. So those were some of the negatives we saw with FECCRA. What we are hoping to do is move forward in a way that maybe takes the wins but eliminates some of those disadvantages. So Lauren, if you could move us forward. I wanted to share this as well. I think this is another important piece of our strategy. It's information that we've shared with the county management team. It has been devised with Atrium Health, who manages our clinic. It also has the blessing of the Health Alliance. They've definitely been a strong partner to us and have provided us guidance. So at this point, as far as our quarantine-type guidelines, there are two different categories, one for employees who have a positive experience, and there's an isolation period for that. You can see for symptomatic and asymptomatic, that's basically a 10-day window. We would still prefer to do 14 if possible, and that is especially true of an employee who can work remotely. We don't want employees coming in while there's any chance they could be contagious to others, but through the CDC guidance, 10-day is a satisfactory time period. The other experience that we have is where employees are exposed, and then with the exposure period, there are two different windows. What the Public Health Department, CHA, calls the gold standard is the 14-day rule, 14 days from the onset of an exposure, but they have just recently changed that guidance to allow those with essential employees to shorten that time window under certain circumstances for essential positions. Concord has recently taken advantage of this provision, and we would also like to do so if we find ourselves in staffing crunches with positions that are very essential to us. So public safety would basically be the category. Any questions on that? I know I'm going through this pretty quickly, but I want to make sure this portion is clear, and our county management team would like to chime in. I'll pause for a moment.
Nothing to add. I think you covered it very, very well, Lundie.
Okay, well, Lauren, if you could advance us to the next slide, and kind of talk a little bit about our recommended process. What we would like to recommend to you is that we continue to provide some amount of pay to assist in situations where employees really shouldn't be coming into work and exposing others. What we would like to ask is to continue a quarantine pay, much as we had before the FECCRA situation was passed, and as you allowed for those exceptional circumstances of maybe a second or even third exposure. It would have to be approved at the county manager level for each situation. We would look at things that include the source of their exposure. Was it a work-related situation, or was it maybe just general community spread? That would be certainly an important factor. We would look at the criticality of their position, and if it's a position that we possibly could remote work, we certainly would lean that direction versus offering pay for somebody to stay out. And then we're going to involve our department heads more in the process. So an example there might be, was this person following guidelines? Were they wearing their mask as appropriate? Was there anything that would potentially disqualify them based on their own actions? So Lauren, if you'll move me forward another slide. What we're envisioning, and this will have to be built out pretty quickly with our IT friends' help, is a request form or process that would allow the employee and/or their manager to request this leave. We would like to utilize a three-day waiting period during which time the employee would use their own personal leave. That waiting period is for several reasons. It will be a beneficial buffer window for us and for payroll to try to get the documentation ready, but it will also hopefully deter people from coming forward if it's not a situation that could pass through all the processes we're going to require. We did ask Concord and Conapolis what their plans are, and this is actually mirroring a little bit of Conapolis' process, where they also are doing a three-day waiting period. That also may give us time for a situation to resolve, and it may be a different type of illness that doesn't require the quarantine, or again, it will give time for employees to get the medical notifications. We would ask the department heads to review and approve this, making their recommendation if it's approved or denied. HR would put in additional information that might be helpful to the county management team as far as their decision-making process, and then those approvals, if Mike chooses to approve, would come back to Human Resources and payroll, and we would be the ones to enter that on the employee's pay sheet. This would be tracked and reported back to the county management team with each pay period. We do that now if we have any excess exposures, but we would want to make sure that we keep a track of the spend and what this is looking like for us. And then one more slide. If the process is denied, then the employee really has a few limited options. They can continue to utilize their time, which is what they'll use for that waiting period. In the event that they do not have any accrued time, then unfortunately, we are going to recommend that they are leave without pay, meaning they just will not have paid hours until their situation resolves itself. Lauren, yep. So that's kind of the process we're envisioning. There's one more piece I'd like to mention, and that is what I would kind of consider the crossover, because we would recommend this start with any new incidents as of 1-1-21. We would like to just kind of keep the current process in place for those who began quarantine in the current pay period and then spill over into 2021. That's just to try to keep the process a little smoother for our payroll friends. Would be, again, just a minor change, I think. We would continue to document, as we're doing now through the clinic, and try to validate those situations, but the new paperwork process would start with 1-1. So that's a lot of information. I tried to go through that pretty quickly, but I just want to make sure you have a chance to ask any questions, or Mike, Rodney, Jonathan, if you would like to chime in, or Kyle as well, if he's on the call. We really feel it's been beneficial to have this pay source because it does encourage people to do the right thing. It's been amazing to me through this journey that we have so many employees who want to work, want to come in, and we love that about them, but right now, it's really just unfortunately not in our best interest to have them physically at work if they are symptomatic. So it's been very helpful to utilize this for people who can't work remotely. So I'll open it to questions or comments.
I think you did an excellent job explaining that, Lundie. Does anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to address to Lundie?
Mike, what's the percentage of people working from home now versus in the office? Did that go down some and then go back up with a recent uptick, or what's happening there?
Yeah, I believe it has. I think Debbie's on. I believe we're somewhere around 40% at home. Debbie, are you able to respond?
It looks like we're going to about 25% right now.
Now we are.
Reporting on the symptom tracker. So not everyone's using the symptom tracker, but of the departments that are, it's about 25%.
Can you explain the symptom tracker?
Sure. The symptom tracker is an application that we created for our employees to be able to report in the morning before they come to work. They can report from their phones or any other device, and it simply asks if they have experienced symptoms within the last 24 hours, and if they say yes, they're instructed to not come to work, and an email is sent to their supervisor and to Lundie and our risk manager. If they say they have not experienced, they're allowed to, they're offered up an option to say they're either going to report to work or they're going to work from home. So we have a nice little dashboard that we can quickly look at and see who has responded yes, who's responded no, and report on the number of people who are actually working from home.
Yeah, thanks, Debbie. That helps us track the employees, but also remind all of us in the morning to, one more time before we go to work, answer those questions, and then make sure that, yeah, maybe we did have a symptom, we didn't really think about it. So it's been a good reminder for everybody to read through that before they head off to work.
And what's the turnaround time on the testing that people are getting, do you know?
I do not know where the Health Alliance is on the... I do not know where the Health Alliance is on that. And it depends on if you have the symptoms, if you don't have the symptoms, and those type of things, so.
Okay.
And if you're essential personnel as well, so, yeah.
Do you want me to share from the standpoint of the clinic, Mike?
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
So, yep, as Mike said, it really kind of varies, but we were fortunate enough to get some rapid tests through the Health Alliance. They have utilized a fair number of those already, and the rapid test will basically give us, within 15 minutes, a positive or negative. If it's a positive result, then we treat that as positive, and the person is immediately pulled, and we can start our internal contact tracing for anybody they've been around. If it's a negative result, though, because that test is considered to be a little less effective, they will do a follow-up mail-out test, and we are hearing anywhere between three and five days right now on turnaround. You know, I think that just kind of depends on the day of the week you have the testing done, but that's, again, just to try to get another confirmation. So through the clinic, that's been the average, and of course, that is Atrium who's running that for us.
Debbie, this is Blake. Was your 25% number, that's the percentage of people that are telling you with the app that they have the symptoms and are staying home, or the total number of people that are currently working from home?
The total number of people that are working from home. If they've been approved to work from home, that's just a way for them to indicate to their supervisor that they're going to work from home that day. Whether they have the symptoms or not, we were just trying to keep track of, you know, the numbers. This question comes up frequently, I mean, how many people we have working remotely, so we're tracking that as well using this app.
Okay, great. And that was an app you all created internally?
We did. It was written in-house.
It sounds like an innovation report coming up.
I was planning on bringing that one in January. I thought that would be a good one to bring in January.
That's quite impressive. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? I would just kudos to all of you. I think that our staff has done a tremendous job throughout this extremely trying year with all the challenges that we've had, and I am not aware of any county services that have been neglected during that time. And of course, the work that all of you do at the county is quite a bit different than those of us in private business. You know, there are people that depend on those services, like from our EMS folks, our emergency management folks, our sheriff's office and the work that they do. Life goes on. People still need to go to the register of deeds, and on and on the list continues. And certainly, all the work that Karen Calhoun and her staff does at Human Services, those are needs that have been particularly critical during this time. So I think everybody has done a wonderful job in trying to make that work in an extremely difficult environment, not only for us, but for every citizen in Cabarrus County, has met certainly different kind of challenges. So is there any other discussion or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion that we approve the extension of quarantine pay as has been described by Lundie Covington to us tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Honeycutt, a second from Commissioner Schu. Are there any additional questions or any additional discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no, and that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Lundie, and thank you, Debbie, and all the rest for the tremendous work that you're doing. We move now to item what will be G5, which is the item that we had moved from the consent agenda, F5, and that is the designation of the voting delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference. When we talked about this at our work session, Commissioner Schu had agreed to assume that position of voting delegate. He has a conflict. That is a two-day event on January the 14th and 15th, but he has a conflict that will prevent him from following through on that. I have spoken with Commissioner Kiger, and he is willing to assume that role as our voting delegate. I spoke also with our clerk, and she said that they had requested a alternate as well. And so I would be willing to serve as that alternate in the event that Commissioner Kiger is unable to fulfill those duties. So I would put that in the form of a motion that Commissioner Kiger be appointed as our voting delegate, Commissioner Morris be named as the alternate delegate for the Legislative Goals Conference. Do I hear a second to that motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so that motion was by Commissioner Morris, seconded by Commissioner Schu. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. And so we move now to our report section of the meeting.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
We need to go back. We jumped over G4.
Yes, I just saw that. So we will go backwards and do item G4, which is from Finance. That is the approval of new signature cards and deposit account resolutions. As it is very evident to everybody tonight, every direction that we turn, we are filling a hole that has been left by the retirement of Susan Farrington, and this is another one of those. So with Susan's retirement on December 31st, signatures on the county's bank accounts will need to change to the new finance director, who is Wendy Hegler. And we have included samples of those financial institutions in your agenda. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to authorize the finance director and the Board of Commissioners chairman to sign appropriate financial institution, signature cards, and resolutions due to the change of the finance director position.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Strang, a second by Commissioner Schu, I think that was, yes. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no, and that motion passes. Okay, and now we will move to reports. So at this time, we will receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards or committees. Does anybody have anything tonight?
No.
Okay, well, we are the, this is the week of Christmas, so we have less announcements to make and less activities going on. So at this time, we will move to general comments by board members, anything that any of you would like to comment on.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and all of that to all my friends at the county level, all the citizens of Cabarrus County that's watching this. Hope you have a safe Merry Christmas and all the good things that go with it, friends and family. But watch that social distancing and wear that mask.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, you very eloquently started the meeting off in discussing the events of the last several days and how difficult that's been on our community. And the one comment I wanted to add to that was, as this board has talked about collaboration for the last six years or so, we have seen firsthand how that works between the elected boards in the county, and it works from county manager downs to the municipalities, but it also works on our law enforcement. And I think it's incredibly important that the county, the sheriff's office for the county works in collaboration with the municipalities, and in this particular case, Concord. And I think that there's just a lot of good that comes from that, and I think this board did a tremendous job six years ago in setting the pace on that. And in times like this, I think that's when it really matters, when those, when the law enforcement people where the boots are on the ground know that each other, they have each other's back, and I think that's incredibly important, especially in this day and age with what we've seen going on in other places with this past summer. So thank you for your comments earlier. I just wanted to add that, and of course, our thoughts and prayers do go out to the family of the officer. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you, sir. Any other comments? Well, I would echo what Commissioner Schu said and certainly wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Our next meeting will be on January the 4th, which will be our work session. I encourage everybody to please be careful, please follow those three W's: wear your mask, wait six feet apart, and wash your hands. We are beginning to see a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel on this COVID situation, and we certainly would hate for folks to act in a manner that would make that problem worse over the Christmas holiday. It's going to be difficult for all of us to have to cut back a little bit on our contact because this certainly is the time of year when we typically love to interact with other people. But I think that I look forward to next Christmas when we can sit back and reminisce about everything that we went through this year and how much better it is and how happy we are to be able to be back to normal. I do not think that we have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kiger to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Schu. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, no, and we stand adjourned. We thank all of you for joining us tonight, and once again, Merry Christmas.
Good night, everybody.